Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will turn it over for a roll call, please.
Mrs. Killer?
Here.
Mr. Pascal?
I'm here.
Mr. Jackson? Mrs. Dion?
Here.
Mrs. Carey?
Here.
Mr. Annaly?
Yeah.
Mr. Nolan?
Rick, we couldn't hear you there, at least I couldn't. All right, perfect. With that, just a reminder, if you have any questions, you can email the board, beeelecomment@cohoz.org. And, perfect, that's the first slide as usual, and we will get to those during the meeting, during the appropriate sections. And now, I'll turn it over to Dr. Spring.
Thank you, President Nolan. I'd like to welcome the Board of Education members to tonight's meeting, and welcome all of our attendees. And again, we thank you so much for sharing part of your evening with us, and we appreciate it. So, our reopening plan, we've been very, very busy, as every single school district across the country in New York State has been, in developing our reopening plan. So, they are due on Friday. We are in great shape. They're due to the State Education Department. So, when I say "it's due," what that means is that there are a series of attestations and assurances that we have -- I have to affirm that we have addressed in our school district, and that we have a plan, and we've included it in our plan. So, the plan actually will be posted on our website, and I will affirm all of those assurances, and the New York State Department of Health as well. I have to just post our plan and submit that, the web link. So, that's what that looks like. You know, we've been working on our plan since June. We've been meeting. Thank you to our three members of our Board of Education, who have also been a part of our District Reopening Committee meetings. We have over 40 members representing all stakeholders, so very happy that we've had a lot of input on this. We have 10 subcommittees, and we have even more members on those subcommittees. So, this week, we've been busy. We met with our teachers, elementary, then middle, then high school on Monday, and we discussed our plan. Just so you know, this plan continues to evolve based on feedback that we are receiving, and the plan will continue to evolve, depending on what the situation is moving forward with the COVID. We also presented to students, and last night, we had a panel discussion with parents. These meetings have been well-attended. For each one of the staff meetings, we had about 50 staff members on the call, the virtual call, and then students, we had about 25. And then, parents last night, we had 120 parents who joined us last night. We also set up an email specifically for our plan. It's feedback@cohoz.org. And we've received 172 email comments and questions regarding our plan. We've answered every single one, either last night, or on the calls, or through email responses. So, very happy about that. So, what does our plan -- so, what are the parameters, the parameters for reopening? Well, we are in Phase Four, as everybody knows. So, we will be able to open if the daily infection rate remains 5% or lower over a 14-day average, and schools will be closed if the infection rate -- one second. If the infection rate, let me just move something on my screen -- is greater than 9% using the seven-day average after August 1st. So, all of this depends on our governor, and he will make the determination next week. So, we are all awaiting his determination. All right, let's see. All right, I'm getting there with leading the presentation. So, one of the key components to the plan is health and safety. And so, we have requirements that we have to address and put in place. So, one is the health screening questionnaire, and many of you are, I'm sure, are familiar with this questionnaire. There are five questions that come from the Move Forward New York. It's based on, have you been exposed to COVID? Do you know, have you had a positive COVID test over the last 14 days? Do you have a fever of 100 degrees or greater? Have you, are you experiencing any of the COVID symptoms? Or have you traveled to any of those states that are in mandatory quarantine upon return? So, our staff members will receive this alert each morning, and they must complete it by the time they arrive to work each day. And then, they're either cleared or not cleared. If staff members have any kind of answer yes to any of those questions, meaning that they wouldn't be cleared, then they would call their building principal and reach out to the building principal. So, we are also required to take temperatures each morning of our students. So, this one, we've gone back and forth on, but in the end, we've decided to align with the rest of the CAP region BOSI's procedure, and that is to have parents take the temperature of their children. They will get an alert each morning, and parents must attest to their child not having a temperature of 100 degrees or greater. Those who don't send back the attestation, then we will have to take some of the temperatures in school. So, it is logistically challenging to be able to take all the temperatures of the children in school. It would require purchasing of additional equipment. While we did purchase more thermometers, and it would require additional staffing. So, we're going to try it this way with having, requiring parents to take temperatures, and we'll see how it works out. So, additionally, parents will receive the health screening questionnaire periodically, and we are going to do that once per week. And again, we'll be following up on, with those families who maybe didn't return it, and we'll have to maybe orally or verbally talk to those parents and ask those questions. We have isolation areas or separate areas that we've identified in each building, because it's important, if somebody does present with symptoms during the school day, that they be separated from students who are coming to the nurse's office for other reasons, such as injuries or taking medication. So, those have all been identified. So, face coverings, this was also another really big topic, and again, a really important topic when we're talking about preventing the spread of COVID. So, all staff and students in grades pre-K through 12 will be required to wear a mask, even when a six-foot distance is maintained. So, we are working on our procedures for mask breaks throughout the day. And Dr. D'Hersey, our school medical director, and she did join us on our panel discussion with parents last night. Her recommendation is that windows open, and students who need to take a mask break would go over to the window, take their mask off, and breathe in some fresh air for a little bit of a time. We are providing disposable masks for all of our students, but we also encourage our families to provide their own. Masks are to be worn on our school buses. We did, I did announce last night, because some parents weren't aware that CDT transportation was not going to be in place this year, so that did come up last night. We are offering additional PPE for our faculty and staff, and we are working with our principals and with our staff on who needs it, and exactly what equipment they would prefer or require. So, part of COVID safety is that we have training for our students and our staff, and students and staff will be taking a training through BOSI's. It's all online, and there's a little quiz at the end. But part of it includes how to wear a mask. And in fact, you probably will agree with me, I see a lot of people wearing their masks under their noses, which kind of defeats the purpose. So, again, we're looking at training. We will continue that with our staff for this opening of the school day and school year, as well as with our students, and how to dispose of one, a mask as well. Social distancing, so our plan is based on six feet apart in classrooms and in all areas of our buildings. We will use multiple entrances for arrival and dismissal, and principals will be communicating this directly to their families. Hallways will be unidirectional, that's one direction wherever possible. We will have signage. All students, again, lockers or locker rooms at the secondary level will not be used. And that was a concern for some parents, who were worried that, you know, what do we do about winter coats? And what about heavy books? So, those are some issues that our principals are working out and working with students and families on. So, hand and respiratory hygiene. Signage has been posted around our buildings. In fact, if you go to one of the doors, or the door here at Page, it says, you know, you must have a mask on in order to enter our building. And there are a lot of reminders about, you know, how to sneeze, how to wash your hands. So, those are from the CDC, and we are copying them and putting them around our buildings. We've also placed hand sanitizer stations around our buildings. They're in hallways, they're at entrances, they're in the cafeterias, and they're also available in every classroom. And then, I already spoke about the COVID safety training to all of our students and staff. So, you will see on the agenda this evening that we have added a superintendent conference day. So, September 3rd and September 8th are now both superintendent conference days. And I know that Peggy's been working with our teacher leaders, working with our principals on the agenda for those days. Peggy, do you want to talk a little bit about those, the professional development?
Sure. So, there will be COVID-19 training and EDLO 2D training, which are mandatory. And then, some of the other professional development sessions are based on feedback, both from teachers and parents. So, tomorrow, actually, I have a half-day meeting with our teacher leaders at the secondary level. So, sessions for those days will include consistent use and platforms with Schoolology. So, as students go from class to class, they will know where to look on Schoolology for various areas. The same thing with Google Classroom, training for both teachers, and then, right at the start of the year, for students in terms of the various technology platforms. We're also working, we'll be working with teachers on social-emotional professional development in terms of welcoming students back, how to have conversations, and then also, a lot of work around priority standards, and what instruction will look like in the various models that we have.
So, there was a question from one of the panelists this past week on, well, can we add another superintendent conference day? So, again, we get four per year. We are still required to follow the 180-day requirement, and we also have a superintendent conference day scheduled for Election Day, November 3rd. So, at this time, we'll keep the two at the beginning of the school year, and we'll see, we do have half-day sessions already planned for the first semester, where we can take advantage of those times as well for professional development. So, the first day of school is September 9th, and our schedule, so what will it look like for our students? So, students in pre-K through 5 will be onsite daily. So, we've added additional sections, so we can maintain a six-foot distance in all of our classrooms. So, class sizes have been reduced to 15 through 218. Again, it all depends on the size of the classroom. So, at Lansing, Lansing actually has the smallest capacity in their classrooms, the lowest capacity. So, we are looking to rework our spaces there possibly, and see how we can, again, reduce class sizes, get everybody in, maintain a six-foot distance. So, we're still working on the Lansing plan there, but we have added additional sections, and again, to ensure social distancing. And this was all done budget-neutral. So, at Vanskyke, we added a fourth grade and a fifth grade. We've also broken fifth grade at Harmony Hill into, added another section. And we've added another section of third, fourth, and fifth. Peg, do you want to talk about how we were able to do that budget-neutral?
Certainly. So, as you recall, during the budget process, we had, due to our enrollment, converted, talked about converting some elementary classrooms to additional AIS positions. We won't be doing that. So, at Abram Lansing, we have low enrollment in kindergarten, so the fourth section of kindergarten has been moved to grade three. We had been planning that, looking at that closely. And then, the fourth-grade position would be the new AIS position, is remaining as a classroom teacher, moving to fourth. And we are moving one of our AIS teachers, formerly a fifth-grade teacher, back to fifth grade at Abram Lansing. At Harmony Hill, the additional position will be in the classroom, the AIS position. However, we are moving a former fifth-grade teacher from AIS back to fifth grade. And then, at Vanskyke, we are not converting the AIS teacher to AIS. She will be, remain in fifth grade, like she was this year, and we will be adding an additional section in fourth. This is a special education teacher who is also elementary-certified.
Thank you.
And if I can just make note, we are making progress at Abram Lansing, going room by room. So, just this week, we have, Cliff has worked with Jim Stapleton to find big enough rooms for first-grade classrooms, and so, and now, we're looking at some of the higher grades, but we are making progress.
So, the middle and high school will have what we're calling, what they call a hybrid model, in grade six through 12. So, they will have both in-person and virtual instruction, and the students will be divided, the groups will be divided in half each day, so they'll only have half of their students on campus. So, here's an example of what it would look like for the middle school. If you're on Team Blue, then you're going to start on, there'll be two first days of school, so that's pretty exciting. So, that will be the schedule, and this schedule will be put out in advance for even a number of months, so that parents can plan. So, another piece to this is, what are we doing with our sixth-grade orientation? Well, Mr. Martinelli is working on a plan to also, that will be part virtual, with giving a tour around the building, and also bringing in small groups of students who will be socially distanced, will have masks on, will sign our visitor log, and he will give them tours.
Dr. Spring, could I just ask about our sixth-grade model at the middle school for next year? So, as we know that the students have, you know, they have not been with us since March, and haven't undergone the traditional orientation, so instead of having them come to sixth-grade and have to have a number of various teachers, Mr. Martinelli has worked with his sixth-grade teachers to condense and the number of teachers that students will have each day. So, each sixth grader will have one teacher, that is their ELA and social studies teacher, and then another teacher, that is their math and science teacher. This was done a number of years ago, and then we moved to the subject model, one teacher per subject model, but we feel this is the good year, a good year to go back to that, you know, closer, more structured model with less teachers.
So, that's more of a pod model, and that is exactly what we're doing at our elementary buildings, where students will, you know, be in their classroom, they'll be there all day with their teachers, and the special area teachers will also be coming to the classroom or conducting classes outside for, at this time. We are looking to possibly see how things go, but once the weather turns, we would like to conduct physical education classes in the gym. Students will need to maintain a 12-foot distance for PE, but we know it's important, movement is important, and we want to make sure that our students have that opportunity as well. So, the high school. So, the high school also has the hybrid model, but theirs is a little bit different. So, whereas the middle school has the pure every-other-day model, the high school has students coming in on day one, okay, both of them. So, if you're on Team Blue, you'll come in Monday, and you'll come in Wednesday, and then you'll come in every other Friday. If you're on Team Gold, you'll be there Tuesday and Thursday, and then again, every other Friday. So, we have kept the same number of periods, and we are looking to reduce traffic in the hallways, and we're still developing a plan of what our transition times will look like. So, here's an example of what the first week of school will look like at the high school. Again, we have our freshmen, our ninth graders, and we definitely miss them. We would like to welcome them in a special way. So, Principal Tarlo has set this up, where half of the students will be in in the morning, and the other half will be in in the afternoon, and they will be doing activities with them. They'll have their abbreviated schedule, and they'll do their COVID training, all those things. So, that's what that will look like. They're also looking to do a virtual orientation the third week of August, and possibly bring in students in small groups for tour. So, they're still working out the details on that. And then, on September 10th, we'll have the Blue team in, and then, on the next day, it will be the Gold team. So, we will have all of our self-contained special education classrooms onsite daily. We will also have all of our students who are in the entering level, our E&amp;L students, they will also be onsite daily. Students who have IEPs will continue to participate in all of their services, and all of their supports according to their IEP. There may be some changes, some slight changes in group size, composition, or direct time, and our related service providers are reaching out to families right now to discuss how to best meet individual students' needs. So, the remote option, so while we firmly believe that having our students in front of us is critically important, that I think we'll all agree that it can be a little isolating, it can be a little difficult being completely virtual, and that also, there's that social-emotional component, that face-to-face instruction definitely helps to foster and helps to really promote, I think, whole-child development. But we do understand that for some families, the remote option may be the best option for their child, their children, and their family. So, we are still developing the details of this option. It may, it will include in district. There is also a regional BOSI's option that is being developed right now at the CAP region. So, we are sending out a survey on Friday, and we're asking parents to let us know. They'll have a week to respond, so these survey responses are due by the close of the business day on August 7th. And we need to know if they'll be attending virtually or in-person for the first marking period, so that is the commitment. And then, once we have an idea about the length, or about how many students will be choosing that model, we'll be able to plan better. So, it could be that we have certain teachers who are going to be on our campus but teaching virtually, and they'll have the students who are all virtual, and it could be in some classrooms at the high school, it could be live streaming, it could be still, again, Google Meet. So, we're still working out those details. We're working with Scott and our association on what's really going to work best for our students and our staff. So, more news on that. Social-emotional learning, as Peggy said, is a huge focus for us. And again, we missed our students, and we want to make sure that they're supported, whether they're with us in person or they're remote, and that we have plans to support whole buildings, classrooms, and individual students.
Dr. Spring, could I add something to? So, this actually came up at a, at our District Comprehensive Improvement Plan meeting, but we will, I know we have a lot of surveys right now. We'll have the virtual learning survey, and then our tech survey. But a little closer to the start of the school, we will be reaching out to parents and asking them if there's anything that they wish to share with us, so that we know going in how the quarantine and how COVID-19 has affected their child and their family, and that will help us plan. Rachel Marso, one of our social workers, is also an administrative intern this summer, and so she will be working on that with us.
Thank you. So, technology, obviously Chromebooks, you know, huge piece of the equation here. So, we have added 550 Chromebooks to the district's inventory, so they haven't arrived yet, so there's a little caveat here. Apparently, there is a problem with the supply chain coming out of China, so we're hoping the 550 Chromebooks will be here, so that we can deploy them for this school year. So, I'll keep you posted on that one. We are going to update our digital equity survey. I know the board asked about that, so that we can get updated information on access to devices at home, home internet availability, and even reliability and quality. And also, for our students and families, virtual learning methods, what worked best during the closure. As you know, we have added Wi-Fi access points to our parking lots, and Spectrum is now offering a new community internet option. All of our families are eligible, because we're a community eligibility program for our food service, so that is something we are promoting. It is at a much lower cost, so we're hoping that some of our families can take advantage of that. Facilities, so I know that Margaret and Rick have been on our facilities committee, so thank you. So, they've been working hard on procedures and protocols in place to make sure that we're logging in and we're cleaning commonly touched areas, for example, door handles, desks, tables. They will all be cleaned and sanitized daily, and we have fully implemented the CDC-enhanced cleaning and disinfecting protocols, and we have trained staff as well. So, ventilation, we have upgraded, or not upgraded, but we've changed all of our filters. Our coils have been cleaned, we're commissioning the system, and that is underway. We will continue to change our filters midway through the school year. Our building automation systems will be utilized to increase the flow of outdoor air. Again, that's key. And window screens, so we have repaired window screens. And window screens, so we have repaired window screens so that we can keep windows open for increased ventilation. Contact tracing, so it's very important that we have accurate attendance records this year for all students and staff so that we can work with the Department of Health if we get contacted or if there is a positive case. We also have put visitor logs with health attestations. Again, those same questions. They've been stationed at all of our entrances. So, so staff knows that if, for example, you're a teacher and who you'd like to go into your building to work in your classroom. So the procedure is you work with your principal to coordinate that. And then you do have to sign the visitor log, again, for that contact tracing piece because normally, teachers wouldn't be in our buildings over the summer. Visitors to buildings will be restricted this school year to school business only. Parent meetings will be held virtually. So for food service, we're required to have an onsite plan and a plan for those who are virtual and those who are completely virtual. So the elementary plan, students will be scheduled to eat in the classroom. District-wide breakfast will be grab and go. We are working out the details there for that. Lunches will be delivered to the classroom daily in our elementary schools. And the middle and high school, grab and go breakfast at designated entrances daily. Lunch at the middle school will be a hybrid model. You may recall that it is a small cafeteria there. So some students will have to be eating their lunches in their, in their classrooms and their quiet study. I know Mr. Martinelli has a plan to alternate those, those students. So the cafeteria, cafeteria experience includes a no-touch service line. Items will be pre-wrapped individually. And again, students will have to maintain a six-foot distance, limiting two per table, or they can sit at desks. Students will be seated with a mask, and obviously, you can't eat with a mask on. So students will be able to take their masks off at that time. Vending machines will not be used. Lunches will be delivered to those classrooms, as I said. And students will be preloaded at the end of the day when they leave to take breakfast and lunch for the next day. So the high school plan is, is almost the same, except there won't be any eating in the classroom. We are utilizing outdoor seating options as well as the old gym. Stacy, would you like to add any other information for food service? So we are looking, okay, yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
All right. So we are looking to initially serve in the classrooms cold lunches. But I am working with Jim Bigley on some equipment specs to see what we could do for hot lunches if this environment continues throughout the school year. So again, the initial plan is the cold, cold lunches in the classrooms, and then we'll work to implement a hot lunch later on down the road. We also are looking to purchase refillable water fountains so students can bring in a water bottle because they're not going to have access to the, to the water fountains as they exist today. So we're, we're working on that as well. And we are also looking to expand the outdoor seating at the high school and potentially the middle school. So we're looking to see what we can do if, if the weather is nice for the students to be able to, to eat outside as well.
Thank you. So athletics, I, I think you are all aware that the season has been pushed back to September 21st. And there is a plan, if, if that doesn't come to fruition, that there is a condensed plan, and some of the seasons would be held concurrently. So, so there are some problems with that model about practice space, weather. So, so we're just going to wait to see what happens with athletics, so. And before and after care, so we will continue our partnership with TSL. They have provided their COVID safety plan to the school district. It does align with our plan. We work together, obviously. They are also limiting the number of children in each group to no more than 10. We will also offer pre-K options at Lansing, and I also believe at Harmony Hill. We'll try if there's interest. We will definitely see about offering that for our families. So at this time, I would like to ask the board for questions.
So I have less of a question and more of a comment. Thank you to all of you because this is an unbelievable undertaking and certainly understand how much work you've put into it and will continue to put into it. And I'm so thankful that everyone cares enough about our kids and our staff to sort of step back and tailor the, the plan that rolled out, you know, the, the template from BOSI's. And so it's not a one-size-fits-all. It really is tailored to our kids. I mean, we're asking every single person in the district to do more with less, but to take care, everything that they're doing is to take care of our kids and each other. So we're really, really testing, you know, community that cares theory right now. And I am sure that everyone is up to it. And I just want to thank them in advance for everything that they're about to do this year.
Thank you.
I'm wondering, I would, I would also concur with what Nadia just said and express my appreciation. I, I just can't get over, it's mind-boggling to me, the enormity of this task to, to manage this. And I, I'm very grateful to all, all the work that's going into it. Was there much discussion from, from parents in particular, from anyone, about the duration of the elementary school day? I know some districts have shortened it, and I, and that, and that also came up from the board. I believe Margaret had questioned that. And was that, was there much discussion about the length of the, of the day at the elementary school?
So, so that did not come up. Again, we didn't want to then have childcare issues for those families who are looking, you know, definitely to send their children to school. I do know that teachers, you know, professional development is something that teachers definitely, we need. There's no question about it. And as Peggy has said, we, since we didn't have all that curriculum writing money this past summer because of budget cuts. So, so we will have to be creative in how we're really working with our teachers and making sure they have all of the tools and the training they need. But we, we didn't talk about shortening the school day. We wanted to make sure that our students were back with us and we had time to really work with them and enclose those learning gaps because we're worried that, you know, we may have to close at some point. I think everybody realizes that that's a probability, maybe a very, very big probability. So we, we really wanted to get and maximize our instructional time with students.
Dr. Spring, I have a, I have a question regarding if a teacher, sorry. I have a question regarding if a teacher in the middle school or high school tests positive for the virus, what happens with those students when that teacher has five classes a day?
So, so that's why the pod model is really preferred because then you can contain the spread of the virus. So we will have to work on contact tracing, and we will have to see where the, you know, the contact that was made between that teacher and all of the students. And all of those students would then have to quarantine.
So if, if the social studies teacher at the middle school or high school tests positive for the virus, then every student they came in contact that day would have to be quarantined?
Well, again, we will follow the directives of, again, Dr. DeCherzi and the Albany County Department of Health. But I believe that that is what would have to happen.
Okay. So then, okay, so now those students have been exposed in social studies, and then they go to math. I mean, is, I know that's the exposure to exposure. I, and I don't know, we're not.
So, so it's direct exposure. So those who are secondary would not be quarantining. But that's why it's so important that we have, you know, our cleaning procedures, especially when you've got a different group of students who will be using the classroom. Very, very important that we're cleaning those, those desks and the area in between those periods. So we're still working on those procedures with Jim Stapleton.
I also have a question regarding the elementary students eating in the classroom. So when lunch is over, breakfast is over and lunch is over, those desks have to be cleaned, correct?
So, and they would be cleaned from food, not cleaned because of virus because those students are staying there. There will be no contamination, but it could get a little messy in there. So there's no question about that. We want to make sure we've got garbage cans and, and we are picking up our classrooms, yes.
Okay, so they won't be disinfected? They'll just be wiped off if there was?
Yes.
Okay. And lastly, what about, has it been addressed maybe with the sped students? Is it possible in school and high school if a teacher was interested in keeping his or her students in the classroom all day? I feel like emotionally, these kids may struggle with what's happening. And could we, could that model work?
So are, so we have self-contained classes, and they are, you know, they're in a pod model. Are you talking about consulting?
Yes.
Classes?
Wanted to keep, yes.
So Peg, do you want to talk about what?
Is so, so for those students, the requirement is now that for them to receive their English credit or their math credit, they have to be taught by a certified English teacher, a certified math teacher. So that could become problematic. I mean, Erin, Erin Hill and Karen Renesi have a special education reopening committee, and I know that they're looking at different scenarios. Of course, if a child is having, you know, is having concerns or is having difficulties on a, on a certain day, then, you know, staff can assist. We can look at, you know, helping them that day and maybe alter that day. But on a, on a long-term basis, it depends on, you know, it depends actually on the certification of the, of the teacher. But we will bring that up to Erin too, so we can discuss the special ed portion of the plan a little more in detail in the future.
And I'm sorry, thank you, Peg. I have one last question. This goes to middle school and high school. So when the students are changing classes, are we disinfecting desks in between each class?
That will need to happen. If you have a different group in there, yes, that will need to happen, and, and we are working on that. Yep.
And who will be cleaning those desks?
Well, it's, it's going to have to be staff. It's going to have to be staff. And we're still working out those, those details, but it is an important part to, you know, containing a spread if there is a positive case.
So, yes, but we're, we're not doing that unless we have a positive case? We're not disinfecting unless we have a?
No, that, that should be done. That should be done. I think it should be done after every period.
Okay, so the teachers, okay, so in a three-minute passing time in the middle school, and I believe it's four at the high school, the teachers have to get, let's say, 20 desks disinfected in that three-minute time from the time the last child leaves and the first one comes in? Wipe down, all of those desks wiped down by that teacher?
Yeah. So again, teachers, maybe students might be helping. I mean, we, we will get the job done, and, and we still have to work out those details.
So we did have a conversation, I did have a conversation with Mr. Martinelli today. So across all of the areas, we'll be coming up with protocols for each of those types of, of scenarios, and then, and then we'll be able to share.
The food service director took an action item to reach out to other neighboring school districts as well because the food service committee was concerned about allergies as well, food allergies. So the food service director has taken an action item to reach out to our neighboring school districts to see how they're handling that. And then we'll, we'll report back the best practices on that. So it's an open item, it's an action item for us.
Okay.
Stacy, still on the disinfecting now with the students. They're allowed to use cleansers or disinfectants?
No, it's, it's really not students, you know, it's not the, we, it's nothing that we really want students to do. So that's why we're still working out, out our procedures, and it will be, you know, with staff.
Okay, so it won't be students using the disinfectants to clean the desks?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm done. Sorry.
But, and Sue, one other thing. So part of all of this is monitoring daily attendance so that if we see any spike, obviously, you know, that will be important information as to why are these students absent?
Okay, we're still going with the elementary teacher in the self-contained. If somebody tests positive in that self-contained fifth grade, what's the quarantine protocol again?
So, so that one's easier. So the whole class, that pod, then would have to quarantine for two weeks.
Okay.
The 14-day mark, yes.
Thank you.
It's Margaret. I have a couple of questions. Wondering, what, what's the vehicle for distributing the health screening? Is it going to be the same for staff and for students?
So, as you know, we just adopted Parent Square. So we are able to push out for parents. They'll get the reminder about the temperature, and they'll also get that, the health screening questions pushed out to them once a week. So for staff, we'll be using a Google form. And we're still working out, you know, what is going to be the most convenient for staff? Is it email? Is it on the phone? So, so we're still working out those details. We, we have developed the form, so, so that is complete. And obviously, we want it to be convenient for teachers. So, so if you have ideas, we're open on how to deliver that.
Well, I mean, Parent Square does that. I was just wondering why, if we are using two separate, why, why we're using two separate?
Well, we can, yeah, we can use Parent Square for our staff as well.
But who, who's getting that information and who's tracking it? So like, if staff put in, you know, yes to one of those symptoms, they just have to be on the honor system and call their principal and said, just wanted to let you know I answered yes, and like the same thing for parents? Or if we're not checking temperatures at the door and parents are filling out the app or not filling out the app, and then they're walking in? Like, the resounding questions last night, it seemed from the parents, were about making sure that, you know, the kids that were walking in the door were, you know, healthy and did not have fever and all of those things.
So for staff, the information is going to be identified either as cleared or not cleared. That is the only information that will be conveyed to the principal for staff and as well as to Tara in, in central office here for, from Human Resources. And I, I believe also, I think, myself or Mary. So, so we're figuring out those details. But definitely, the building principal and Tara will be in that loop to get that information. As far as students, that information would go to, as I said, the principal and the school nurse. And listen, this is, there's no perfect solution for the temperature taking. And we may decide to change on this issue. But I, I do know we were advised by CAP region BOSI's that, again, this could be a liability for the school district. You know, we would prefer that parents take the temperature. And when that does not occur, then we will have to be at the door and we'll have to figure it out. So there are logistics with that as well. So, so either model is fraught with difficulties. And, and we also weighed, weighed that, and we may change. And, and we also weighed, weighed that and we may change.
Could I, could I just add, um, as you know, Parent Square is new to us. Katrina and Sylvie did have a conversation this morning with a district that is utilizing it for health screening. And so we, we're still working out the details. Um, but in terms of the health, health screening, we will be able to determine who has, who has taken the temperature, who has not taken the temperature, and we'll work out systems throughout our building then to, to ensure that the temperature is taken of those who, uh, indicate, have, do not indicate that it, that it's happened.
So are we going to require parents to submit the temp, or do the attestation or whatever mode it is by a certain time so that the buildings can review before the arrival of the children so they know who to screen, or is this going to?
Yes, we're, we're going to set it for a certain time.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, I just, I guess my questions are not setting people up for failure here and, and trying to make sure that this process, this process is manageable. And if it's not, you know, maybe thinking of some other different solutions. But I just don't see, you know, if you have an attendance clerk or somebody coming, you know, at the door who is meant to be tracking Johnny down because he didn't take the app, and then he shows up and we're not staggering start times, so we have 600 kids showing up at the same time, like, how is that, that, that doesn't seem like, um, it doesn't seem like a manageable thing for the staff that we already have. And I know that we have to work out details, but again, we, you know, have a day to submit this plan and we're just getting the information. So I just don't know if that's a, a feasible option to just say, okay, well, we hope people are honest. And then later on, find out after he's, you know, Johnny's been in school for an hour, that they didn't actually take his temperature and he's running a fever and all of these things. Like I said, a lot of the questions last night were based on what if a student comes in sick? A lot of them were.
Sure. So first of all, the plan is fluid. Um, so if we decide on Monday that we are going to take temperatures in school, then I, we go to the website, we, we update our plan and then we communicate that to our families. So, so it is fluid. We can make changes based on, um, what we believe to be the best moving forward. Uh, so, so with that being said, um, we are utilizing different entrances and, uh, we will need staff, uh, to help, um, manage, um, all of this. So, uh, we're working out the details, but, but i- in the end, we may decide, um, to, to go with temperature taking, um, onsite before students enter the building.
Okay. I also had a question, thank you for that. Um, I also had a question on the additional sections that we made at the elementary level. It seems to only be in the upper elementary, the grades four and five, and I'm just curious to know, um, you know, were we able to? Now, I know that we do concentrate on making sure that, that we have lower numbers at the K2 level. But, I mean, are they within a framework of where, say, the fourth and fifth grade are now? Like, now we have nine or 10 kids in fourth and fifth grade, but we have 18 in kindergarten?
So, um, our target, 15 through 18, um, our, our kindergarten enrollment was, was, is very, very low so far. As you may recall, uh, did not have enough students to fill up all of our pre-K4 classes this year. Um, so looking across with all the principals and looking at the spaces as well, our primary classes were also in many cases, not necessarily at Lansing, but kindergarten throughout the district and others where our larger classes in many areas. But our class, but our class sizes are all hovering within that, uh, 15 to 18, I believe. We can revisit, revisit tomorrow and, um, send you an update as well by class size now within.
Yeah, that would be great if you could do that. Thank you.
Yep, yep.
Um, and do we know, like, do we have an idea timeframe when we're going to have square footage settled at Lansing so we know what we're looking at?
Yep, so because the, uh, survey results are due, uh, a week from, uh, this Friday, we have another meeting scheduled, a walkthrough at Lansing the following Tuesday, so I believe that's the 11th. So we can provide you an update after that walkthrough.
So it depends on how many students do choose the virtual model. Um, so we would like to take that into account, um, and, and before we finalize those configurations there.
So I guess my next question, perfect, uh, segue, is, is the remote option. I, I don't feel like we've really explained what that's going to look like and we're asking parents to make a decision about whether their children are going to learn virtually, but yet we have not described to them what that looks like or what type of resources that would be. Um, I mean, I don't think that, um, as a district, I, I would not be on board with a regional model. I think our kids deserve to have a teacher. I think they deserve to have that personal, um, you know, relationship with people that they know inside the building, even if they are not able to come in. Um, so I think it's very difficult to be asking parents to fill out a survey of whether or not they're having their kids come if they really don't know what that means. They don't know what a virtual education looks like.
So, uh, again, it depends on how many choose this model and we wanted to go to our community to present what the in-person model would look like. Uh, because again, that's, that's what we're hoping most of our families choose. Um, but we do understand that for some of our families, that will not be the right option. Um, so we can tell our families that it will be synchronous. Most of it will be synchronous learning. Um, we are looking, again, to have all of the subjects taught, again, in the, the, under the closure. We've just prioritized, but this will be, you know, all of the subjects. Um, and, uh, again, I think at the elementary, it might be a virtual teacher and there would be a virtual class. And it will look different at the secondary level.
But does that mean that they're on a computer for eight hours or seven hours a day? That they, that there's the same, uh, you know, format and structure of a regular classroom? I mean, I think that there's a, a lot left to be questioned for parents who are making a very important decision. And the thing that they're committing to this for an entire semester, or, uh, entire marking period, it's a long time to, um, you know, commit to something that they don't have any information on.
So we agree with you, frankly, um, and we're doing our best to, to, you know, get everything all planned. And if, if there is a parent who decides after the deadline, before the, some, the school year starts, uh, that they would like to go virtual or vice versa, then we can make those adjustments.
Okay, so we have an idea, one, we'll know what that, what that remote learning looks like? What does the virtual world look like? Because even, you know, it's in the schedule of the middle school, high school, that they're virtual on opposite day, whether they're or, you know, if they're in person or, or at home. Does that mean they're just going home with, uh, paper packets or worksheets to complete on Puleggi? They're not having that teacher interaction during the virtual day? They're just expected to do work on their own?
Peggy, would you like to talk about that?
Um, yeah, yeah, so, uh, that's the focus of our meeting tomorrow with teacher leaders. I can say it might look different across different content areas because different content areas lend themselves, um, to, to different, uh, different platforms. Um, the, the students will not be, our, our classes will not be, as far as I know, unless something changes, will not be streamed during that time. Um, but they will be sent home. We're in the process of developing lessons. I had a good conversation, so for example, social studies today, um, looking at how we could, uh, deliver some content during the virtual learning, um, through Apex. Have the classroom instruction and then some additional content through Apex. And then when students are back in the classroom, then the teachers are working with them directly on, so, constructive responses or other skills. So we're still, we're still meshing out what that hybrid, uh, model looks like, what that other day looks like. But we'll definitely have more information, um, next week.
So Peg, can you also, like, that Apex, i- if we were to do something like that, are they not, um, through, uh, one of, one of those like subscriptions, you only have so many, um, you know, people that you can have accessing it at a, a certain period of time?
Yeah, so, um, that's what, uh, I looked into and we're still awaiting the final response. But we believe that's why we moved from NovaNet to Apex is because we have, uh, unlimited licenses. Um, that's what one, one, one response was, but we're digging deeper. You know, as we're setting this up, this hybrid model up, we're also having conversations about, okay, so what happens then if three weeks in, we have, you know, we have to close? So we're also setting that framework up at the same time. So we're making sure that some of the things that we're doing during the hybrid model can also lend themselves to, uh, if we do have to close, we understand that nothing takes place of face-to-face with, with teacher instruction. Um, and we also understand we have to, we have to cover the standards, there's region's exams, et cetera. So it's not that we can only do half of the, the content each week, so, um, but I'm confident with our principals and our teacher leaders at the secondary level that, um, we'll come up with a, with a plan that will meet the students', students' needs. But we'll, we'll have more to share. Right now, it's just all kind of in the conversational brainstorming. Um, the decision on the, on the actual models at each of the buildings has just been made very recently. So this is definitely our next step and our focus for the remaining, uh, for the remaining month. And we're looking at if there's any way possible, um, this is not a good summer to have, uh, not to have curriculum writing monies. We're looking if there's any way possible to look within our budget so that we could bring some teams of teachers, teachers in, you know, for, for very limited time, but between now and August 31st.
Um, so, uh, going kind of along with that, I mean, really, in, in reality, the way that the, the schedules are laid out in the secondary, i- it's like they have half the time to do just as much, uh, get as much curriculum in. Because, you know, coming to school every other day is literally half the school year. So, you know, if they're going home and having to learn on their own, I would be interested to find out how we're, how we're actually going to do that. But, um, I guess, um, you know, another question is the digital equity, you know, within our students and, and, um, their internet connectivity and if they have, uh, things at home so that if we do have to transition on a dime and we have to make this decision, okay, tomorrow we're going virtual. You know, I know that we had talked about, um, having another survey deployed. How, how is that going to be sent out?
So that survey will also be sent out through Parent Square. Um, our first, about the virtual learning, we wanted to wait and hear, um, Governor Cuomo's announcement next week. You know, the first through, sometime during the first through seventh. So our plan is then to send the, uh, digital survey out that following week. And, um, we've looked closely at the, uh, digital equity survey to, to frame that.
Okay, thank you, Peg. I heard Charlie barking.
Peggy, I, oh, I, well, I have a question. Dr. Spring, maybe you can answer this.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Will the virtual option, okay, so if child, if a middle school or high school student is in school on Monday?
Yes.
Um, then half of the class is home on Monday?
Correct.
So the virtual option, is that a recorded lesson? Is that virtual while the, the teacher is teaching? Are the children at home getting the lesson at the same exact time? Um, is it virtual after school? How's that work?
So it's not synchronous. So it, so it's not, so the students who are home aren't connected inside the classroom.
Okay, so when are they getting, how are they getting that?
So it could be, so the teacher records, um, you know, lessons. Um, the students are preloaded with, um, you know, the, the, um, work that they will need to do so that then they can, um, you know, complete the deeper dive into the new learning on the next day.
Okay, what about those who choose to be virtual all the time?
So that is the model that we're still developing. And, uh, it could be, you know, you have a, a live teacher and your whole day is with this teacher and that teacher has the students at home. So, so that model could work at the elementary level, but again, it depends on how many choose this model and, um, staffing implications, because there will be staffing implications. Um, then at the secondary level, I know, uh, many school districts are doing live streaming. Um, so this is something, obviously, we have to discuss with our association with. Um, it's not recording, um, it's live streaming. But there is a requirement for specialized equipment and we don't have that specialized equipment. So that's why, uh, we're still working out many of these details on what exactly, how we can make it as synchronous as possible. Because we know if all asynchronous, that's, that's not going to.
What is the requirement that we don't have?
Uh, so for example, the owl or swivel, so we're looking into, uh, some of those, um, pieces so that we can easily livestream. Otherwise, we can use the laptop, just do the Google Meet.
Um, could I just quickly go back to the digital survey? I just wanted to let everyone know that it is also going to be, be a part of our registration form at a given point in time after the survey's found out. Then anyone new to us on an ongoing basis will have the same questions as part of the registration.
I also have one other question, um, to Doc, to Dr. Spring about going to the window, um, to get some. I have two questions, actually. Um, one is, um, I'm, I'm putting myself here for a minute. Um, the student, I mean, the elementary students, you know, two or three students have to get air and the whole class has to get air. Uh, I, I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how that's going to work. And secondly, um, the social distancing, uh, goes out that window that the air's getting, I feel, because everybody rushed to the window. And it's, I mean, and the same thing, uh, would happen in elementary or in middle school and high school too. All of a sudden, one or two get up and they, it's like the bathroom, one has to go, they all have to go.
Sure.
And they're all going to need air.
So, exactly. Um, obviously, we all need air, so. So we are still developing our protocols and procedures and practices for mask wearing and mask breaks, or for mask breaks. Uh, so that is the Health and Safety Committee, so we are working on them. Um, Dr. DeChersey, when I, when she was asked, uh, last night during the panel discussion with parents, what would she recommend? She said, uh, it would be somebody going to, you know, with permission, uh, going to an open window and taking, you know, the mask off and breathing. Um, that's safer than staying at the, the desk and breathing. So, so these are fraught with, uh, lots of issues, um, and we have to work it out so that we can ensure the safety of, of everybody in that classroom. But going outside is a good option.
My, I understand, you know, the raising of the hand, I just, um, I mean, that teacher could spend all day, with hands in the air, you know, may I go to the window to get air? I, I, and I don't know where the social distancing concept is violated because there are desks near those windows.
Yeah, so we have to work out the details. What would be the area where students could go to the window to, to take a mask off? We, we have to work out a lot of details still.
Yeah.
Can we get an idea of when, when we might know some of the details? Because I mean, the, the plan is due tomorrow, right?
So, we are developing protocols. I am attesting to that. We're developing mask break protocols. That is, you know, in, included in the plan. We're still working on it. Um, and again, the plan is due tomorrow from the attestations, I mean, on Friday. But we continue to refine the plan on our website for our community. That really is the purpose.
I guess there's a concern too that, you know, it's going to take a while for them to be looking at these plans. And what if they come to us in two weeks and say, it's not good enough, or we need this, or we need that? We don't have the time to, you know, wait for those things to happen. We don't have the time for them to review and come back and say, you need this, that, or the other. You know, all of the things that we're finding holes, we need to make sure that we're addressing those things.
And we are. We are.
Okay, so we can have a timeline of when, when we're going to know?
About the mask breaks protocol, so I'll be meaning.
There, there are things that are going to have to be board approved, like, right? So if we go and we have an attendance policy that states Johnny doesn't. So if we go and we have an attendance policy that states Johnny doesn't come in if he's got a fever overnight, that's, that's, that's all part of, like.
So COVID-related issues that could be conflicting with some of our policies. So we actually, I'm recommending a board resolution for our next board meeting, for us to have a resolution that would take care of that in case there is a conflict with our, our current policies. That would be an umbrella that would take care of that.
But these will be spelled out somewhere.
Procedures for attendance, that's part of our plan, yes.
And just give it to parents and put on the website and all of those?
Yes. Yes. And parents also said they would, they wanted to have another panel discussion. And so that is something we will do closer to the opening of school to, again, engage our, our parents and answer their questions.
The last thing I just wanted to say is, you know, food service. Stacy, really glad to hear that they are considering a hot lunch and trying to make some accommodations to, to make that happen. I know that was a big concern for some of our, our parents and, you know, some of their kids don't like, you know, having a sandwich every day. So I do appreciate the fact that you guys have, have really tried to look.
Thank you. We're gonna work on that with Jim Begley, actually. Yep. I really hope that we look at that mask issue because I, I, I just, I feel for these teachers who are going, they're going to spend all day on that, going to, no, I mean, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm really concerned about that for everybody.
So, so I, I did work closely with the teachers and Scott Charlon on masks. And it was the recommendation of the Teachers Association that all students be required at all times to wear masks. So with that being said, we can figure out the mask breaks. We'll get this, we'll, we'll get it right. It's not gonna be perfect, but we'll get a system in place because it's about ensuring everyone's safety. And, you know, wearing masks is an important part of that. So, so we will figure it out, so.
Okay, thank you. It's just the window thing that I haven't understood. Thank you.
And that was only a suggestion from Dr. DeChersey.
I understand that.
Again, I just want to reiterate and thank everyone involved in putting this together from top to bottom, from community folks to, that were involved in our discussions, to Dr. Spring and everyone involved in our committee. It is a gargantuan amount of effort to rework how education is done. We've been doing this mostly pretty similar, you know, for decades, how education has been run. And it is going to be very different. And for many students, the level of educational experience that they get is going to be lower. And that's gonna be how it is, at least initially, while we figure this out. We're gonna do the best we can, but we can't kid ourselves and think that everyone is going to be learning at the same levels that they were before. It's going to be a different experience for, for everyone. There may be some students that excel more in this method than others, but I think at least to start, it's going to be a very challenging experience for a lot of our students and has been this last spring. And I'm really appreciative of everyone putting our best foot forward to, you know, we're, we're basically choosing what we prioritize here. And we're prioritizing health and safety and, you know, over perhaps a, the same level of educational experience that they're used to. And I think that's the right choice. It does mean there are gonna be a lot of growing pains and there are imperfect solutions because this is an imperfect problem. We're going to be running into these types of problems constantly. And it, it just, we're, we're gonna do the best we can to mitigate things to the best of our ability. And I appreciate everyone, you know, bringing them up and trying to find out the best solutions that we can in working with what we have. So thank you again to everyone. Are there any other board questions or comments related to anything from the agenda? The only thing I wanted to comment on was there is a donation from Huddle to the district that I wanted to thank them, that is for athletics. And hopefully, we'll be able to get to use that donation at some point. And I did have a couple of questions from community members. One was again about the window question about, from Elaine Flato, about what it might look like if a student looks to the window to get a fresh air break? What about the students that are seated next to the window? And how do we account for their safety? And I do wonder, you know, just as we're talking about this, I wonder if this is something that we decide to move forward with. Perhaps there's some sort of rotation schedule where folks can just take, you know, oh, I've got three minutes at the window and the next kid goes. And it's more structured in that fashion than just get up when you want to. And that may be that way. If there's 15 kids, everybody gets a couple of minutes there. But as far as students who are seated close to the window and Elaine's question, I don't know what the answer is there quite yet. Or maybe there are a window where there is no student seated next to it.
Those are all great suggestions and I'll take them back to my committee.
The other question we got from Dawn Dorsey is just a little bit confusion around the pod model. And it sounded like to Dawn that at last night's meeting, that in the event of a quarantine for a particular classroom, that if some of those students were not showing symptoms, that they would be separated from the rest of school, but would be on campus? And could they get a reminder of what the procedure would be for quarantine if the student is still able to attend class? And how do they get virtual learning from the quarantine period?
So I believe this is from an elementary family. So in that situation, if there is a positive case, then everybody in that pod must quarantine for 14 days. That's Department of Health, that there's nothing else we can do. They would move virtually and they would then go to their Google Classroom model. And then they would have, again, depends on who's sick here, but if a teacher is sick, then we'd have to get a substitute. So, so, and, and couldn't work. So, so these are things that we'd have to figure out. But definitely, if there's a positive case, then there's contact training, tracing, and then there's quarantining for 14 days. We just have to determine who. So, and then the virtual model would be in place for those students with that, their same classroom for the quarantine, the period of the quarantine. That's different from someone who selects the 100% virtual model. So, so that, that's what it would look like.
Thank you, Dr. Spring. And then if either of you are listening and you don't feel your question was answered, feel free to follow up again to the feedback email address and we'll get back to you. Moving on, next, if I could get a motion from the board for tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
I heard a second from Nadia there.
Oh, Nadia, okay. Mrs. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal? Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Annalee?
Yes.
And Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
With that, are there any comments from Board of Education members on any topic at all unrelated to the agenda? Anything we haven't covered?
I, I have a couple of questions. Well, not, actually not questions, but, first of all, there, there was a question that came to me about supply lists. Parents haven't gotten any kind of supply list yet and wondering what the timeframe might be for them. I know that we're working on this big plan and supply lists are down on the totem pole, but I did say that I would bring it up.
Kayla can mention that. We, we wanted to, typically, they go out when the parents know their child's teacher assignment. So we have been working on that. So now we'll work with the principals on, on making sure that the supply lists get out soon.
Okay. Stacy, I just had a question on the CARES Act funding. I'm wondering if that's something that, you know, we're applying for? If we have an idea of what we're doing with the funds that are attached to it? And what type of dollar amount we have been looking at, that we have been spending to make accommodations for the, both returning to school and remote, if there's expenses that are involved in all of those things? I'm wondering where we are in the budget for that? And then if these funds are gonna be allocated to cover some of those costs?
Hi, Margaret. So the CARES Act state aid planning is offering an overview next week, so I will be attending that. Pam and I actually have a meeting on the calendar tomorrow to brainstorm. The initial allocation looks like it's in the neighborhood of $600,000, which is better than we thought it would be. The application is due August 15th and right after the state aid planning session, Pam and I'll complete the application. So I'll share out the PowerPoint. I'm assuming it's gonna be a PowerPoint from state aid. I'll share that out with the weekly board communication so that you have that information. And then as soon as we have the application drafted, I'll share that out as well. Within two weeks. It'll be within two weeks, Margaret.
Great, thank you. And then just the last thing I wanted to, is a clarification. There, there was, you know, been to a couple graduation parties and there's been some miscommunication happening about the fact that the class of 2020 paid for the entire graduation ceremony. And I just wanted to, while Stacy was on the line, clarify that that was false and those came from our, our Board of Ed budgeted amounts for graduation? Is that correct?
Yeah, we went through an events, yes. We had a contract with an events company for the tent and the stage, et cetera. So, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that that was clear for, for people. Thank you.
Had a couple of items that I wanted to, and actually, the CARES Act was on my list. Is it okay if I do that now?
Go ahead, sure.
Okay. So I just wanted to share that there, so far, there have been a couple of holds on state funding, 1920 funded. So we had a pre-K. So far, we've experienced a hold with our pre-K 1920 funds and ESY summer for 1920. We were funded at about 80% for the ESY receivable. And the hold for pre-K was about $160,000. And then we have not yet received our allocation totals for pre-K or Title I. So that's not normal. So that the state finances, the situation with the state finances is, I'm guessing, holding up that information. And then I did have a call with Heather Lewis, who is the lead auditor at Marvin Company. And as you know, our field work is scheduled to be completed on August 17th. And she wanted to discuss what our COVID protocols were. They do plan on a hybrid model for the week of 8/17, so they'll be basically in every other day. I, I discussed what our protocols were here and then she shared what their protocols were. And we're in line. So they're limiting the number of staff, they're practicing social distancing, wearing the masks when they enter the building and then when they're in their workspace, they can take it off. So we're trending fine and we're on the same page as far as the audit field work goes. And then just the last thing I wanted to talk about real quickly, because I know that this meeting was really dedicated to the reopening plan. I did update the long-range financial projections, so I'll send that out to the board with this week's weekly update. So I updated the projected, the 2020 numbers, but they're pre-audit, so they will change because when the auditors come in, they do have adjusting entries. But I, I just wanted to talk quickly about the highlights there. This year, we did really turn things around with the COVID closure. So we, we were, we were trending at almost a $600,000 loss in December when we met. And so we turned it around. We have what's like a $250,000 operating surplus, which is great news. So that's really attributed to what I'm categorizing as general support. So that's gonna be Jim's budget. So reduced HVAC costs, electrical costs. We did not purchase the bleachers. We did not go forward with the capital outlet. From instruction, it was really the, we didn't have the spring athletics. And then special ed did come in slightly under budget. For transportation, due to the COVID closure, we had no special runs. We didn't have the athletic trips. We didn't have field trips for the spring. And then health was the biggest contributor, so our health contribution. So that's really two items that we had initially in the early winter when we were trending so horribly. I did request a credit. There's Kachek RX Reserve, so I did request a credit, $250,000. So we did receive that. And then we did have a, a project that actually Cindy Muzio led for me, where we collaborated with Kachek and ERS and TRS to identify retirees that hadn't had any claim experience for six months so that we could have HR reach out to those folks. We do have retirees that don't contribute anything at all to health insurance. So if there's a reporting discrepancy, obviously, we do not want to pay for premiums for someone that might have been deceased. So we did have that project, which was successful. And then really, just for the upcoming years, I updated the 2021 column for the approved budget. What were, what the elephant in the room is gonna be state aid? So we'll have to monitor that and make sure that we minimize any loss, any operating loss. And then I had to change the assumptions for year 2022 and 2023. We had historically said we'd receive a 3% state aid increase. Obviously, that's not going to happen. And then we will need to schedule a meeting with the city because in year 2022, Brookfield is a large pilot. That pilot ends, and so we're going to just need to confirm the status of that pilot because right now, the assumption that it's, it's gonna roll over to the tax roll. So we'll need to schedule a meeting to confirm that. And lastly, I just wanted to say with the adjustments to state aid, we're going to need to revisit our budget goals. So what we'll do is I'll send this out to the board. I'll update it in the fall after the audit and the ST3 are complete. And then we'll revisit our budget goals. But I expect we'll still be limiting our expense growth to match our revenues. No appropriated use of fund balance and really restrict any reserve use to preserve our cash, cash position, particularly with the state finances, the way that they are.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. With that, we have our upcoming meeting, meetings on August 12th and August 26th. And we'll be right here, as I don't think anything will change in that regard. So you'll see us here online. And with that, I'll just need a motion to adjourn at 7:00. And, uh, with that, I'll just need a motion to adjourn at seven thirty-two.
Mrs. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson? Mrs. Dion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Annalee?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. That concludes our meeting.
Yeah. So just so everyone knows, next time I'll be in my office and Charlie's being in his room. Goodbye. Hi, have a good night. Thank you, everyone.